It is October twenty-six, five oh one P M. This is a meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. Uh, I will do roll call vote, um, starting with Ms. Mar, Ms. Mar.
Ellen Mar present.
Mr. Grady.
Oh, Paul Grady presence.
No problem. Mr. Plex.
Chris Plex here.
Jean Healy Dippled here. When Jack comes in, I'll have him identify himself for the record. Mr. Senior is here. All right, uh, well. This is, um. Mr. Creighton, you want to identify yourself for the record?
Uh, Jack Creighton here.
Okay. This is a working session of the Select Board and, um, we will. Uh, proceed that way, including, um. I'm not going to read the, the usual. Public comment, et cetera, because that's not noticed. So, um. This is a session to begin planning for town meeting, including what happens at town meeting and then. The sort of logistics or issues we think we need to make some progress on before. I would suggest that it might be helpful to start with just a discussion of what's to occur at. Town meeting in terms of logistics from our standpoint, just so you all know. I'm meeting next week with the moderator and the Chair of Advisory. As typically happens to go through some of these logistics in terms of what the Select Board intends to do on its end. So I wanted to get. Make sure we were all on the same page about what we want to do. And so on that front, the warrant has gone out. Everyone has it. Um, we know what the, well. Some of us haven't, some of, it's arrived yet. Um. Just to throw it out there, my thought was that we would divide up the warrant articles. And have essentially a Select Board, um, you know, speaker or speakers assigned. Just sort of lead point on those as questions come up. Um, I think we probably also want to think about what presentation we want to do in advance on any of these articles. Typically, we get five minutes. To do an affirmative presentation. And. One option we have is to do videos. We already have. Use the videos as our affirmative presentation. Um, I looked at the timing for each video and. I think we need to redo Town Hall because that one. Was pretty early on and there's more that can be done there, but police and fire, we have. Um, a video that's three minutes, uh, forty-eight seconds. Roads and sidewalks, three minutes, forty-nine seconds, fields and stabilization. Three minutes, fifty-seven seconds, and then fields and rec is three minutes, thirty-six seconds. So all of these are a little bit under four minutes. So that leaves one minute. If someone wanted to, you know, say whatever they wanted to say in that extra time, including as it relates to, for example, how much it costs. Because none of these videos really talk about. Um, the exact. But, you know, the, the specific cost for the particular item, including as it relates to. The tax impact and on the tax impact, and then I'll just open it up. One thing that I previously brought up, but I wanted to just flesh out with all of you was. One thing, um. That. I raised with the moderator earlier was whether the long-term finance committee could just do. An overarching. Here's the report that we just did and here the specific cost to sort of frame the conversation. For everyone, including all of the costs and how they, they line up. Um, because otherwise I could see people being like, well, if we go to Town Hall, but what's the next cost? And you know, like. What's the big picture here? What's the ultimate price, which is? Questions that I've been getting. And so the moderator did say that. He would be a minimal if that's how we wanted to proceed to have. Some sort of introductory level setting on what the big picture is, including as to cost on that front. So we could do that as, for example, we start with the Town Hall. As sort of like an intro to all of these articles that will result. In tax increases. So I'm going to stop there and see if anyone has thoughts or ideas or.
I, I would say that's an excellent idea because by doing that, we frame. The rest of it and allow people to understand it in, in context. And that's our overall theme. So I think it's a great idea, Jean.
What do we think about using the, uh, I'm sorry, Ellen, were you going to say something?
Nope.
Paul.
No, I think it's a good idea to leave with the, with the heavy stuff, the long-range, long-term financial report. I think it's good.
Jane, just one clarif- sorry, Jane. Just one clarifying question. Uh, were you thinking about five minutes per article? And my, my fear is that especially for the ones that should be relatively straightforward. That might be more than we need, but, uh, just wanted to check on that.
Uh, that's the max we're allowed.
Okay.
The max we're allowed to present an article is five minutes. And so, for example, Chris. Um, with roads and sidewalks, we could put the video up and say, you know, here's our presentation. This is the video and if. Uh, let's say Paul as our liaison wanted to say anything like, and you know, where. We have a five O Select Board recommendation, so we should probably leave a little time to say what the recommendation is because none of the recommendations are in the video, right? Um, the Select Board has unanimously voted for this fund five O. And if we wanted to add something else in there, but just to keep it real brief because. I think we still have time. We have about a minute, um, for all of these videos to do that.
Do you have?
That makes sense. Thank you.
I have a question after Ellen.
Sure.
So our five minutes, um, is exclusive and not. Um, to beat up with advisory or capital. And do we know if they're going to say anything or the school committee?
Our five minutes, if I understand it, is. Exclusive and Chris, jump in here if I'm wrong. And this is what I can, I can, I'm happy to confirm all this with Dan. But I wanted to come with a plan to Dan and say, this is our understanding. Can we just like make sure everyone's on the same page as we head in there? Um, and so I do believe it's five minutes for the affirmative presentation of each. Is that right, Chris?
By the Select Board.
By the Select Board and then advisory can get up and, you know, give their spiel and, um. We can talk about the schools too, about allowing time for the schools to stand up on the school articles. Is that right, Chris? Am I making that up? I thought typically we have. You know, the presenter, so to speak of the article.
And that's generally the, generally how. Dan runs it. That said. These are all really weighty topics, so if, if there need to be a little more, you know, leniency, I'm sure that he's going to be okay. Um, and so it, it, and to go back to the video, so I was actually working with Justin on shrinking them and having just. Uh, rather than the, and maybe just having them like a short, like here's the project, here's the cost, you know, like. I mean, we could use the ones that exist if you'd like. I mean, I was kind of just do a simpler one that maybe just a minute or two, just. Kind of just highlighting what the project is, uh, that it's, that it has, you know, here's the costs associated with it. And, um, you know, we can even put the votes of the committees on there if you wanted to, but we're not, you know, so, so it just sort of summarizes it, you know? Um, and then someone could speak, you know, uh, that'd be a liaison for the board, you know? Talking off that a little bit to maybe make another few points. That, that way allow you a little more time to talk if you wanted to, um. But again, we, you know, we have time to do that and Justin's already started to do those kinds of edits.
Well, could I add something to that?
Sure.
I think you might want to redo it. The very least the Town Hall video. Chris, I would disagree on one point is that. You know, with the video. Gets out there, people pay attention to the video and maybe if. Extolling the virtues of what we're trying to do. Uh, especially on Town Hall, which is one of the most contentious. I think you really want to get the benefits of what we're trying to do. And Jean, I was going to add. To you is on the long-range finance, long-range financial report. And I'm not telling you what to say or like that. But you may want to put a plug in for yourself because remember we got shellacked last year. From certain people about not having one, false promises, and you delivered. Um, just in a very kind way, obviously, but I would redo the. And, um, because we got tagged on that and people walked off the committees and things like that, but. You picked up the ball and you ran with it. So that's fantastic. I would take.
I totally agree on the Town Hall video. I think it.
Got to extol the virtues of that. That's the hottest topic right now. Is getting that over the, over the finish line and the benefits. Are incredible and what we've tried to do by way of. Addressing multiple needs instead of singular one, which was brought before us last year. And also that spells out, that might put a hammer in on CPC and any naysayers on that because, um. To a degree. But I think explaining the benefits. And then something, Jean, we, maybe if I could throw this out, if, um, I might be premature and I apologize is, um. Is about what I took some stuff away from the meeting the other night is. Chris, this is more for you about putting language in that we intend. To leave that affordable in perpetuity. I know that's a lawyer thing. But that kind of struck home and it seemed. That would really garner a positive response. With more than one person. That way, the, you know, for instance, you can imagine that. Another board or something like that may say, what the hell, let's condor and turn it into mark or turn it into market rate. We won't show. I don't know. And again, I may be premature and if I am, I didn't need to be.
If I could jump in on that, um, I would agree wholeheartedly. I've had a number of conversations. I've reached out to people. And in this, in the, uh, understanding that we need to anticipate. The. Potent, potentially potent arguments against it. And by the way. Not all of those are legitimate concern. Some of them is just plain politics. Unfortunately, um, but. The giving certainty to the affordable housing community and people like the. Classic Housing Authority. Um, and the Affordable Housing Committee as opposed to the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, that when fact, this is one of the major things and benefits. So I think we need to figure out a way. Um, and this is probably Town Council on how we can give certainty to it will be, um, affordable. Because that will cause a lot of the objections to just evaporate. And it takes away a very potent things where people who are opposed to it anyway, and they're hanging their opposition. On, on this, but we just take it away. We say, just as Paul said, we will guarantee it. And I think we need to figure out a way to put some certainty in that. And that's a Town Council.
So I have an update on that, but before we get into the, the details and the substance of Town Hall. I, I would, I would ask and suggest that we stay focused on at least the logistics of town meeting to close the loop on that. Because I, I think, um. I think that. It's, it's my hope that we can get as many people to support it, including possibly in a video. Um, for a town meeting, if we can work through some of these issues in the interim, which I think is our hope to try to. Um, address the concerns and suggestions we heard, some of which I think were great suggestions and, um. You know, have something that's. A good product for town meeting too. Um, Ellen. Yes.
Um. Kid, I'm going to circle back to the videos comments. I agree on a new Town Hall video. I, I would keep the other videos as they are in their last incarnation. Um, one, it exposes to a broader breadth of, of. People involved than, than just the five of us and Town Hall and, um, and it leaves. Um, you know, what did you say, Jean? Three minutes and forty-nine seconds on average?
We still have about a minute, minute and a half for, for all the rest.
That's a long time to talk. So it's a long time to speak on the project and, and to be, because. I feel strongly that each of us. Or one of us has to stand up for each of these articles. Because we have put this forth and, and we have to talk about it and not rely on the video to convey. How strongly we feel about these. And we can, we can talk about the numbers and the tax implication and all, all of that, you know, and the five O vote. As, as, as a, a visible human person at, at the meeting. But I think, I think the videos, the, the last incarnations are very, very powerful.
I'd agree with that, Jean. I just think that the only one we really need to redo is Town Hall.
Yeah. I agree. We all agree. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. And who knows, maybe we've even made progress within the building that we can, you know, show, for example, what a layout of one of these apartments is. I don't know. Maybe that's too optimistic in terms of where the construction is, but. Again, that was some time ago, so I think. We've advanced a lot, um. So. I think that it sounds like we're all on the same page. We'll use the existing videos with the exception of Town Hall. Um, we will have Select Board presenters for each particular area. Um. And we will use the, and we can probably talk about this more in the, the future meeting that we have and maybe we'll need one more, but, um. We'll talk about. You know, sort of hitting the key areas of. This is a unanimous vote by the Select Board. Here's what the tax implication is for this particular project. And, you know, a few highlights of why this is important, um. And what I would suggest is maybe for each of these areas, we have like a lead and a second. To help, help each other, you know, support each other, including when. Issues come up or helping in drafting FAQs without violating forum rules. You know, if we were to assign ourselves certain areas, then people could work with each other on, um. You know, just having a second set of eyes, because I think what would also be helpful is if we could work on FAQs for. These particular projects, we know we're getting some, we're getting some from capital, we're getting some from advisor. Uh, we're, we're getting some good questions. And to be ready and prepared and have unified answers, I think is also helpful too. And so. That's a part of the role I see also of the, the presenters and liaisons is to. You know, take lead on that, including with a second to, you know, just help with the drafting and back and forth review. If that makes sense. Without having to have endless meetings.
It, in, in addition to questions from the audience.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. Questions from the audience.
Right, right. So that, that we're prepared, right? Because I, I know police, fire, uh, you know, one thirty-five King Street and one Pleasant Street, we have FAQs. Chris's office has done FAQs.
And so we should look at those, see if we think there's new, different if, um. So those are done, I think, for some of the others, including zoning, which we haven't talked a lot about. That could become pretty hefty, Jack. So maybe you and. I'm saying Tom, sort of the liaison there with you, but.
Yeah, I, I think that, I'll, I'll work with Tom, um. And I think that makes, that makes sense. But we've done, made, done such a good job so far that I think. Most of the opposition we've already dealt with. But yeah, I'll be prepared and, and we may want Tom to. Uh, lead it off and me to kind of be the backup or vice versa, but we can figure that out.
Okay. So why don't we talk about assignments? I think, um. There's some obvious ones with, for example, Ellen, you with the schools. Jack, you lead, um, Jack, you lead on zoning, Paul, you lead on, um, roads and sidewalks. Um, Chris, I would suggest you lead on the rec projects. That are out there. So then we have a Town Hall and Police and Fire. Um.
I think Paul's good on Police and Fire.
I have no problem, Police and Fire, Jean. I would, I, I'm going to throw you in front of Town Hall, even though I'd be happy to take it. Um, I think you have a better presentation than I do. I can deal with Police and Fire. But I think, and I'd be happy to back you on Town Hall.
Sorry to interrupt you, Paul, but I agree with you in particular because, uh, when those legal issues come up, you are the attorney in the group, so. Sorry, Jean. You're the best man for the job.
Oh, sorry.
Agreed. Agreed.
Um, what I might suggest is, Ellen, if you would be my second on Town Hall. I think we'll bring, uh, some woman power to the Town Hall issue. And maybe Chris Plex, if you want a second Paul on Police and Fire, including. Helping through FAQs. There, there are still some thorny issues there potentially. Um. Jack, I think it would be helpful if you wanted to, um, weigh in on rec. I think that that would be good to have. Um. You know, you and Chris both supporting Beechwood. I know. That's been. A lot over the years and you can speak to the sort of. Issues there over time, um, if need be, if that comes up.
Yeah, I think on Bee, on, on Beechwood, but on Town Hall, there's one thing that I might be, um. A good voice for, which is a historical perspective of, of asking. Everybody. All the elements in the community. To participate and everybody gets. What they want, but everybody is compromised and that could be.
Jack, is that asking for trouble after what we got on Tuesday night, though?
Yeah.
No, I think what that does is that counters that. But that said. Yeah, the, 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 and I've talked to a number of people, um, subsequently. And they send it, when you ask people to sacrifice for the greater good or to compromise for the greater good. When they see everybody else is doing it and the whole thing is, it can be difficult for them. To hold out because then they start looking very, very parochial.
And Jack, what I'm worried about is, um, i- if the message is. Everybody's at the table. What we heard on Tuesday night was we were excluded. So I'm. I'm with you that it's a good message. I just worry that it invites slings and arrows. That we're better off avoiding.
You may well be correct. And my feeling is that. You know, I would be prepared to do that if necessary. But if it isn't necessary. Don't do it.
So how about this? I'm sorry, Ellen. I've, I've been talking a lot. You go ahead.
Um, no, I, I agree with you, Chris, and, and maybe Jean and her comments preempts that. And indicates that go, you, you know, as this project continues to evolve with a positive vote, working with. The Steering Committee and the Trust are paramount in the success of the execution of. The, the, the residential part of, of the building and, um. It doesn't speak to the fact that. They felt slighted. From Tuesday night.
Well, yeah, I, I, I would, I, I don't care if I do it or whatever, but I think that should be on the message. And one of the things we should be aware of, I subsequently discovered is there was a lot of lobbying. In, by, in particular, of a lot of phone calls. And it wasn't what I would say led, um. Really addressing the issues, but more looking for, um, opposition. Sorry, it was, it was already, the opposition was already there and then fanning the flames. So. So I wouldn't overreact to giving that credibility. I look at it as how we deal with that is really how we deal with it politically. Because. I just know that. There was no, um, what I would call. A legitimate discussion. It was, I'm opposed to this anyway, and this sounds good. But as long as we are prepared to address the issue. I have no desire to particularly. You know, uh, you know, address that per se. Um, but I think we should be prepared. To address that issue and it should be addressed in the terms of, we've all come together as a community. To solve this and everybody is given a little bit. That's all.
I just wanted to put three letters that are the elephant in the room into this conversation. C P C. Alright, so whoever wants to handle that, that's going to be the bulk of Town Hall, I think. Um. We saw that Tuesday.
Well.
And we saw that, um. CPC contribution. I think that was really the biggest pushback. The indication that I might take away was people are technically for it. They just don't want CPC funding it, any of it. So I'm going to put that just out there. If you got, you and Ellen to, 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 to. Toss it about.
Along that, along that.
Hold on, hold on a second, Jack. Sorry, I'm going to pull rank his chair here. Um, I want to make sure Ellen and Chris have a chance to weigh in because Chris. I feel like you are in the middle of speaking.
Uh, Jean, I was just going to point out that I, I think to your appropriate guidance, we should be sticking to schedule and assignments here and not getting into issues.
Yeah. Yeah, because we haven't noted, we really haven't fully noticed this either. And so I, I do want to make sure that we're. Within the open meeting law contours, um. So we can do, we can discuss all of this more. I think. Let's, let's start to divide and conquer. Let's do the FAQs, including to address some of your points, Jack, and then we can. We can get drafts and then we can distribute them among the Select Board through Tracy to make sure we're not violating open meeting law. And then we can all come together. Um, and review sort of where we are and what we have, because I think the FAQ is going to be helpful and important. And so, um, so I have. Ellen and I down for Town Hall. I have Paul and Chris down for Police and Fire. Um, Rhodes. I have, uh, let's see, um.
Paul.
Paul. Uh, Ellen, you for schools. I don't know, Paul and Ellen, if you feel like you need seconds for roads and, and schools.
Um, I, I'm would anticipate, I was going to reach out to Lance Style and see if they were going to speak on it. Um. You know, I think it's important that the school committee, y- you know, has a voice on, on this issue. And so when we say schools, that includes feasibility.
Ye- yes, although if you want help on that, you let me know.
Yep.
I, I would speak to Lance and to Jason Earls.
Yep, will do.
Um. And what, when you, when you talk to Jason and Lance, if you could also just let me know if they in fact plan, if they want. Time formally, because I will let the moderator know. So he can plan accordingly on his end. I think that's the sort of information he'll want to know. And actually, you bring up a great point. So Paul, maybe your second is Jay.
Makes sense.
Right? And Jack's second is Tom. And if, if you. If you, Paul can confirm with Jay that he'll want to. You know, get up and say the piece through road and sidewalk. I think I can let the moderator know again, so we can talk about. Timing, just in case we get any feedback from the moderator on that point. Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I, I think Rob Hillman will let Dan Evans know who, who's going to speak on which article ahead of time. I'm not quite sure if capital budgets will or not.
Well, they have to vote first.
Oh, I was going to ask that, but it's not, I was, it's going to come under topics. Yep. Have they voted on anything?
Please imply. Four one. Um. Okay, so. So that's helpful and I think that now we have our respective. Marching orders and we can go forth with FAQs, including talking with our. You know, a counterparts, including, you know, Jackie with Tom, Ellen, you with Lance and Jason. Um, Paul, you with Jay. Pimpare and, um. Chris and Jack. I'm not sure how much really needs to be done on the rec projects. It's not a tax increase, or probably not a lot, but on the CPC recommendation. And I can take over the CPC recommendation on Town Hall if you would like as a part of my Town Hall duties.
Yes.
I mean, I don't want to.
Back you up on that since I'm on CPC.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
No, I don't need to, I mean.
Yep. Okay. So does that sound like?
Yeah, no, that sounds like a good plan. I do have a question about CPC. I believe they're meeting Monday night.
Yes.
Yeah, is there any indication that there might be a shift in? Votes?
Not when I get done with them.
And the other thing is I have reached out to CPC. And there are some misconceptions. And there's some also. So if you have relationships, anybody on the board with CPC members. Now is the time to give them a call. Because I, I, I think they're fine with it, but now with all this stuff that was thrown out. And the most important thing we do is we. Make sure that. Everybody understands that we are willing to give certainty that all of the units will be affordable. Once we do that, I think you're going to see the opposition, you know, melt away.
So why don't we talk about that? It's five thirty. I did want to talk about a few more logistics relating to town meeting, um, including just so. The board members know. In terms of. Movement forward before town meeting, um. Mr. Senior has graciously gotten. Mr. Senior has graciously gotten me, and I think you sent it to the entire board, the list of everyone who voted in the two past town meetings, including your neighbors, our neighbors. Consider if we want to do any door to door. That might be something we want to consider. Another thing we might want to consider is table at the RTF, that's a high traffic area, including on the weekends, um. We may also be able to get some other citizens who are, yes, Chris.
I just want to fit, when you finish with that, I want to tag on what you're saying, because we actually have something that I'll, I'll have Justin describe, so.
Okay, um. Yeah, so tho- those are the two big um, ways of, I think we can do outreach to the voters. Um, and it doesn't need to just be us too, if like, you, you know, one, one thing that I was thinking of, we could do a signup sheet and I know that there's potentially others that would be willing to sit at the information booth, so to speak, at the RTF to provide information, um, so we can divide and conquer. So I wanted to put that out there too, in case folks were interested. We only have four days essentially, um, before town meeting, the, the two weekends. So think about it, and Justin.
Let me, let, let me tell you what we talked about and then I'll let Justin explain specifically. So I raised this again with, with advisory last night at their meeting and Rob Hillman has volunteered to sit at the soccer field on Saturday. It was up the street and we're getting a couple of poster banners made, um, which, which again is something we need to talk about with all of you tonight too. I want to make sure we're good with that language on that final one pager. Um, and so we can get those printed. So he'll have those sheets, he'll have the banners behind him and he'll just be there passively if people want to ask questions and he'll be available. Um, and because Mark Maggi on the, who coaches recommended that happen, so he volunteered for that. Um, we're also gonna set up a sign up, which Justin will talk about in a second, for anyone who works as staff up at the RTF. We, we've broken it into four hour shifts on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays for the next three weeks, including this weekend, if anybody wants to pull off a shift. Um, and we're getting, we're getting some poster banners made up there, which we'll have up there too, even for Wednesday, because I don't, I don't think it's as busy on a Wednesday, but people still go there. Um, so we'll have that, we'll have that ready as well. Um, so again, and to do the sign ups, let me have Justin explain what's been set up.
Absolutely. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, real quickly, I'll, I'll talk about the, the one pagers first. Uh, our goal is to have five hundred one pagers uh, made up uh, front and back uh, for select board members uh, to take with them on Friday, for Mr. Hillman to take with him on Saturday, and then for us to all distribute on Sunday. Uh, we're also looking at, once that's approved, uh, which uh, was emailed uh, earlier this afternoon. Uh, we're gonna take that and we're gonna blow it up on twenty-four by thirty-six boards. Uh, and we're gonna strategically place those boards uh, around Tantico asset. We're also gonna blow it up into eleven by seventeen. We're gonna strategically place that in different local businesses uh, and, and, and areas uh, around town. Um, we are gonna be using signup genius, uh, so that link is, is ready to go. Once we identify uh, who we'd like to send signup genius to, that's gonna allow people to pick out different time slots. Uh, we're gonna do four two hour time slots for the next several weeks over at the RTF to hand out those one pagers. And of course, we'll also have a, a, a poster board uh, over at the RTF uh, as well. And we will also, uh, at some point utilize the, some of the uh, LED sign boards as we get a little closer uh, to town meeting.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Um, I do think advisory is willing to assist, including in the signups. Um, not, I mean, everyone has their own schedule, right? And so, listen, I, I get select board has been a huge amount of time and commitment for all of us. My husband looked back, we've had twenty-eight meetings. I think this is our twenty-ninth since June. I mean, we've really been doing a ton and so you should do what you can, um, and every bit counts, so we'll just do as much as we can. Um, so, but please look at those one pagers, because it, they're gonna be everywhere. So now is the time, look at them. Make sure everything that, within reason, that we need is on there and then, um, they'll be blasted, the information will be blasted out and uh, um, the last thing that I would just say is that now I think are, with the exception of the Town Hall video, which we need to work on. Everything on the website is pretty locked down in terms of, there's no more community conversation information on there. When people go onto the website, it's sort of the final versions of everything. Um, and so sending out emails to all of the people that we know, including the people who know a lot of people, is also a really helpful way and maybe more effective than sitting at the RTF for two to four hours, to be perfectly candid. So, um, wh- what I've been doing is um, sort of using the one pager format that Justin has put together and um, saying, you know, here's what it is, here's the tax impacts, here's the website now that has everything on here. And, you know, call me, please, plan to attend, plan to vote and go from there. Um, so again, just to like reiterate, that is a real helpful way to get information out to people too. Chris, are you asking me something?
Nope.
Oh, sorry. Okay, alright, um. Yeah.
Are we, or are we not gonna do a mailing? I, I'm under the impression that we're gonna do a mailing, even a postcard size that makes it fast, simple and easy to read. So I'm a little puzzled as we're condensing, but I, to something that's a grab.
So we could modify what's been sent out to all of you into a, any, putting on a little tiny postcard, I think it's not gonna work. It's too small, it's too hard to read. But an eight and a half by eleven size, we could do. So if you could look at them, that, that one page that was sent out to all of you and, and we could tweak that to a postcard by, you know, sticking in the, you know, an, an address box on it. And it, it, it has, it's kind of the summary of all five projects, uh, the big ones plus a, a link, so you can, you know, scan the QR code and jump back to the webpage. So if, if, if we can do that, but I, we need input on the content of it. So if this works.
You send it out till, so it's editable?
Um.
And then like, you know, we could send it back, or do we just have to chicken scratch it and write it down and then send it back?
Yeah, it, it's kind of, it was produced in Canva, Paul, so it's kind of hard to send out for in an editable way. Um, uh, I mean, i- i- if there's something, I mean, if there's something fun, if it was just words, it's easy enough to let us know what the, what your concerns might be if there's a stylistic thing, that's a little more challenging to be able to address, though, um.
And Tracy and Justin, could you just resend it to the board right now, just so every, with like a big subject matter that says one pager review tonight?
Just sent it about an hour ago. Did you guys get it?
Yeah, I got it. I just read it. It, it looks great, in my opinion.
And, and, and I will say, uh, Mr. Paul, if I, if, if I may, there, we, we did make a couple of very small formatting tweaks. After we sent it to you, we made just some of the fonts larger, um, and you know, we bolded special town meeting, especially on election. That's all, that, those are the only little changes that we made. That's not reflected there.
Oh, I see. I, okay, so I saw Tracy's and you made those little tweaks. Okay, I got you.
Because I'd like to blast it up to Hillside. I've been sending stuff through Hillside, so there's a number of emails on that and people just try to get them to the meeting, so. Again, it was smart to keep it simple.
Okay, um, yeah, so if everyone could just take a quick look and then just, um, so it sounds like Ellen, you're cool with it. Everyone else, just let us know, so we can, we've got to get the copies out for tomorrow afternoon and for Saturday, so that'd be great. Um, okay, let's quickly turn to in the last remaining minutes now. I, I would suggest that we can't dive really too deep into the substance because of the way this was noticed, um. But I would suggest this is a part of planning for town meeting, um, as we go forward, including with CPC. So just to provide you with a quick update, we Chris and Michelle, and Chris, I'm gonna speak for you in the interest of efficiency. Um, Chris and Michelle did reach out to our lawyers about options for the affordable housing restrictions that um, was feedback we got from a lot of the members on Tuesday. And they are, it sounds like there is a way to do this and they're exploring that right now. And specifically, what we're looking at is an agreement with CPC to, in exchange for the money and the agreement would be that we would um, record a voluntary restriction on covenant on the remaining nine units, with that restriction being low to moderate income, to give us the flexibility to do the different varieties of things we're considering, such as workforce housing, um. So it would provide a ceiling, but not a floor, if that makes sense, but we need to see how it's written. But I think we're making progress on that. The other option is to do something more formal, which I think will take a lot more time and well, I'm just gonna say, it's to transfer portions of the property to the Affordable Housing Trust and do a restriction through that way.
Ooh, new.
Which I think, given where we are right now, it's just not really feasible. And so we're looking at option A, not B.
Jean, do you think the lawyers will have, I'm sorry, Paul.
No, go ahead, Chris. I'll, I'll follow up after you.
Do you think the lawyers will have something of substance for CPC on Monday, Jean?
Exactly my question.
Um, I think if everyone's okay with this path, we can ask them for sort of a um, proposed language that, and, and again, we, we need to notice this issue and um, be able to deliberate on it i- in keeping with open meeting law requirements. And so I think what we could say is we're gonna have a draft. When we have it, we'll send it to you. We're gonna try to get it for the CPC meeting. So really, um, Chris, maybe I, I would ask, do we think KP can have a draft by Monday to provide to CPC?
I think it's important that they do.
Yes.
Well, let's see. Because maybe CP, you know, CPC could meet later in the, in the week, I mean, I mean, we've met many times.
The criticism we've had up, and I think it was fair criticism, was you guys don't seem to have talked to your lawyers. I mean, we all know how we feel about that criticism, but it'd be great if KP could step up and provide us some paper armor here.
Mm-hmm.
Quickly.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
And I would also add that I think it's very, very ingenious that we say that's an agreement with CPC. Because then we put the ball in their court. We're offering this, in return, you get this. And in that scenario, it's very difficult for them to oppose it, because when they agree, now it's just, not just the four units, all of them become affordable. It's a great idea. Very, very savvy uh, political strategy. Well done.
But our lawyers have to have this nailed down for the CPC meeting on Monday. It's a bad look if we say, can we wait? Because we don't have our act together.
Yeah, I, we're, um, I mean, our backs are up against the wall and I, I'm gonna say KP is, you know, there are town attorneys, right or wrong, but they, you know, they've got to step up on something. If we can have that for the thirtieth. I mean, it was unanimous vote. We kind of wanted to drag it into town meeting as unanimous vote. We know where the blocks went up. This might be able to kick that, kick those uh, door jabs down.
So, and listen, just by way of background, I just want to level set here that I realize we're in a unique circumstance, but le- le- legally, legally, when I was on CPC, they had never done any agreements with any of the affordable housing money that they had. And, and I said to them, you haven't, like, we need to do an agreement. And so I have a copy of the prior agreement that I'm wondering, you know, maybe we could work through quickly.
Jean, I, I agree with you, uh. This, this is something you, you, I know I'm preaching to the choir here. This is something unique, this is something different. We've had a lot of questions about how exactly is this going to work? I, I think whether it's for CPC or otherwise, our attorneys have been a little late in providing us the clarity that we've been asking for. So let's give them a hard deadline and make sure they meet it.
Agreed.
But I like the covenant idea.
Jean, I would say this too. We all know, I mean, that CPC and affordable housing have gone hand in hand for a long time. And they haven't had agreement. The same thing happened when I was on CPC, now that I'm back on CPC. But I will, I will parrot Chris in saying this is unique and also that we wanted to gate the politics that have come into play here. Um, and that's basically.
I'm totally aligned with everyone, but I can't, I can't be the town's lawyer.
Oh, no, no one was suggesting that.
No one.
Yeah, yeah, yes. I just wanted to note it for the record.
We want to be able to present it on Monday, though, you know.
We just want you to whip our town lawyers, Jean.
Yeah, KP has come forward a couple of times. I agree with Chris a hundred percent. Um, for whatever the reasons, but this is something that, you know, it's kind of a hard ask.
So Chris and I will touch base with KP tomorrow morning.
Yeah, that's, and let us know.
I mean, listen, it's probably gonna be a draft. CPC may want to take a look at it too and, you know, it's the beginning of the process, but I hear you on, we want something to show good faith and movement, um.
And we want them to step to the plate and say, they'll do it. And because now it's in their court, they want all the units affordable, they've got to get up to the, the, right.
Jean, you make a good point. The one thing I do think we need them to be rigid on is that of the two approaches that we discussed, the covenant or the formal transfer of the units, the approach that we're proposing, even if it's draft, we need KP to be rigid on, this will work, this will achieve the goals in perpetuity as you seek to do. If they can't do that, then we have a problem.
Yep, and Chris, I would steer away if I could. I'm sorry to interrupt. I would steer away from her. I would press on the covenant. I don't think going into business for the affordable housing is gonna, uh, work in anyone's favor, to be honest with you. It's the covenant.
I, I, I absolutely agree. I would not put those units in the control of the, of the Affordable Housing Trust. I just absolutely would not do that for reasons we all understand.
Yes, Ellen.
So, um, you know, I think, I think sometimes we have to think of the unintended consequences. So what are the unintended consequences of putting in perpetuity the nine units as, as affordable or local preference or something, is we can't fill them. Right? If, if the market doesn't bear, I mean, it's, it's literally right next to a train station. It shouldn't be hard to fill nine units with renters. But if they're, if we're handcuffed by certain things, then we can't, you know, if it's local preference or workforce, if it's only workforce and there's no workforce that want the units that.
Ellen.
I, I think the.
I'm sorry. No, they're, they, in that covenant, that they will be deemed affordable, but it gives us the right for workforce and it gives us the right.
The way a restriction works. If we do the restriction, you can only use it within the restriction. And so if we we, we'll have to comply with the applicable workforce requirements. And if we can't find workforce, then we don't, then those units don't go to workforce, they go to others within the lottery system at the applicable AMI requirements.
Right, it's a, it's a preference.
Yes, yes.
So I don't think there's a risk of these going vacant.
I don't think there's a risk either. I think it's a chance we'd have to take.
Well, and, uh, can, can I just interject a bit? Like, uh, again, I think that we need to be careful to Ellen's point about unintended consequences. Like, even when you look at the city of Boston's housing restrictions, some of those are thirty year restrictions um, to account for a variety of factors. And so, I, and, and I think that if this is our preferred option, that perpetuity may be a harder push.
Well, Jean, if I could back you up on that, because a- as I'm ruminating on this more, um, setting this up in perpetuity may obligate us to provide these units after that building may no longer exist. So I, I think some time period limitation or carve out for the select board can, through some reasonable process.
For the useful life of the building.
Right.
I agree with that.
So I'm on board with moving off of perpetuity.
I think that, I, perpetuity is just a, a catchword. Jean, I agree with that a hundred percent for the useful life of the building, that. I think that perpetuity is just a catchword. Gene, I agree with that a hundred percent for the useful life of the building. That would be. I think that was by a lot of. Choices.
But again, this is. Yeah, we, we want the lawyers to zone in, right, on what would be the appropriate language here. And we don't want to promise things that. Might not be appropriate. Or just industry standard, right? So, okay, we'll, we'll focus on that and.
One point, how we define restrictions. We don't have to say workforce housing. We can say generally accepted. Affordable. Right? So if we say it has to be workplace, that's one way. We have a category. But if we say affordable. And it can include workforce housing, elderly, da, 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 da. We do that. But how we write and wordsmith the restrictions. Just leave it a wide open, you know, restrictions as long as affordable.
Well, and this is why I want to be careful about what we provide to CPC, because we will not have a chance as a select board. To formally weigh in and deliberate before we get the draft, because they're meeting Monday, which is too late for us to notice a meeting beforehand. And I think we need to provide it to CP, to the extent we can get an agreement, which I desperately hope we can. We need, do need to provide it to CPC with the caveats. That the select board still needs to review and weigh in, but you know, we've given our lawyers.
And Gene, I think, go ahead, Paul.
No, Chris, go ahead.
Nope, your turn.
Gene, I think that's a fantastic idea. I think that the select board still has to weigh in, vote, but it shows our commitment to CPC. And. They see something in writing that from Tuesday, what was it? Tuesday? And here we are coming in on Monday. We've got something done, something on paper. The select board does not have time to meet, but. This is what we're, what we're gearing towards. I think it's a great.
Yeah, they get what they want and what we want. So that's, that's simple. And we're, we're saying, if you really want that, you've got to participate as well at your half of the bargain. That's where I think they'll be very hard pressed to play politics with it.
Chris, you were going to say something?
I, I was just going to come back to. Jack, I think you were suggesting we move off of workforce and. That is concerning to me because the narrative up to this point had been that one of the principal benefits of those nine units would be. Providing them on some kind of preference basis for workforce, which would include town employees like police, fire. Et cetera. So I'm reluctant to move off of workforce if our lawyers can find a way to make the covenant reflect that.
Well, what I, what I. That's not what my point was. I said.
Okay.
My point was that we avoid necessarily restricting it to only workforce. Workforce would be amongst the categories. We have people who say, who will say, what about our elderly? What about our police and fire? So the idea of broadening the restriction is not to remove workforce. But to say this is the category, the categories that we will consider, and you use the term among these options. No, I don't want to take workforce out. I don't want us to be restricted only to workforce. That's.
Okay.
No, I think we've always, I think we've always been along those lines, Jack. So I, I agree with you there.
Yeah. It sounds like we're on agreement, which is great. Can I just ask in terms of next steps? Our next meeting is November seventh. Which seems very far away and it's only one week before town meeting. I think we still have work to be done on the affordable housing issue, including. Reviewing whatever we get, responding to CPC if need be, you know, starting to land more substantially on. What the program looks like. You, you can't mix, you can't have workforce and veteran housing. It, like, we have to do, start to pick a lane. At least with this initial round and so. What, what I'm asking is, do we want to do, as painful as this may be, another meeting, not on Halloween? But on another day, I'm thinking Wednesday or Thursday.
I think we have to, even though I don't want to, but I think.
Is there a day that works better for the? Everyone.
A week from tonight.
Thursday. Chris, is that workable for you all on your end? Again, I know it's painful, but.
Just going to check calendars. Is, is this going to be a regular in person?
Probably.
Yeah, I, I, we just got the final location for sure. I, I. I don't know what the availability of. Any particular site is.
Well, does, setting aside the location, because we can deal with that, including virtually if need be. Is everyone free? And I'm going to suggest six thirty on Thursday, in part because we're going to probably need to do an executive session on our. Favorite topic, oysters. Everyone, don't get too excited. So.
I can't wait.
Six thirty, Thursday?
All right. We'll confirm a location and then have that, let, let you all know.
Okay, okay. Five fifty-seven. We don't want to keep Ellen from her vacation. Is there anything we want to talk about before someone moves to adjourn?
Here, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, hold on.
But before, can I just ask if you could please get me your comments on that one pager either tonight or first thing tomorrow? Cause we're going to turn it into. You know, posters and stuff we have, we need a little time. So.
Looking at you.
What?
You three, the men. Going to get Chris comments.
I did notice this woman's empowerment theme tonight. So, yeah.
You know. I've given up.
We just get stuff done, Paul.
Jack, this is on the record. Be careful.
Have you ever talked to my wife, Lisa?
Motion to adjourn.
Good. Thank you.
All right, we're going to do roll call vote because it's Zoom. Uh, okay. So we have a motion and a second. Jack.
Hi, Jack, rating I.
Um, Paul.
Already.
Chris.
Chris Black, I.
Ellen.
Ellen, Mar, I.
Gene, he'll dipple down. All right, everyone get their comments in.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.